For town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals, if you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Christine?
Here.
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Tony G.
Here.
Tony S.
Here.
And I'd like to welcome our new alternate member, Linda. She'll be a voting member in a case of recusal or someone otherwise unavailable, a full-time member unavailable to vote. For any of you unfamiliar with the procedures here before the zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in its order on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, will be sworn, describe their application. There may be some questions from the board, and we'll open it up to comments from the audience, both from the physical audience and anyone who's attending via Zoom. That brings us to item number one. That's 54 Woodlawn Avenue. Is there someone here for that?
Yes, this is Ernesto Rinas. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, the last time you were here, you described what you wanted to do, and I thought we had asked for some descriptions of some alternate ways to accomplish what you wanted to do?
That is correct, yes.
Did you produce anything?
I did not. Unfortunately, I'm sorry about the noise in the background. Unfortunately, the contractor that I wanted to work on the project that gave me advice on moving the driveway, not from where you originally thought, but to the right of that, which I think has more space and would be aesthetically more appropriate as well, was injured, and I was not able to get that appraisal done. Nonetheless, my understanding is that in the next couple of weeks, I should be able to myself go personally up to the house and discuss the solutions with him to see which one is the best option, obviously aesthetically and practically for the driveway to be built.
Okay, if you were granted a adjournment, would one month be enough?
That would be enough, yes, I believe so.
All right, so before I move for an adjournment, is there anyone here from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? This is a driveway extension at 54 Woodlawn Avenue. I don't see anyone in the physical audience. And I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll move to adjourn this to, I think, March 11th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number two. That's splash car wash. This is an item that's, an application that's still before the planning board is waiting for their decision, so we're not going to be able to vote on anything tonight. If anyone had any comments about this application, I'm going to move to adjourn it again to the March 11th meeting, which I think the planning board may act by that time. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. Okay, then I'll move to adjourn this to March 11th. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number three. This is an interpretation. Nope, this is emergency one. Okay. Is there anyone here for that application? Okay, my understanding is, I don't see anyone coming up for that application, but my understanding is that we're waiting for a response from the county on the amended application. Is that correct? Either Sonia or Christine or Chrissy?
Yes.
Or Lisa? Yes, okay. So again, is there anyone here for that application? All right, because we're waiting for a response from the county, we're not going to act on it tonight, so I'll move to adjourn this one to the March 11th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four, the interpretation. Is there someone here for that application? Come on up.
We're still waiting for one more.
Sure, okay. Then I'll put you on a second call, all right?
Thank you so much.
Sure thing. All right, we're going to go to item number five, then. This is Moon Rose Hospitality, 2605 South Road. Come on in, have a seat.
I have some digital photos.
Okay, very good, yeah. But if you wouldn't mind taking your hat off. Thank you very much. Okay, I think you're still in the road, so why don't you go ahead with what's new?
Yes, thank you all, and it's great to be here. I apologize for my car trouble last time. The request at the last meeting was to put up a spec sign that we all had a few guys who were there and checked it out, and I apologize, we had a little DIY, and we had a couple of cameras at that corner of the building that will be removed, sort of a real sign, and we had a focal to that temporary sign. Since there were questions about the kind of context around how big this would look, I wanted to provide some photos and also show our immediate neighbors in relation to what we're proposing here.
The first page that you see here, the photos are just showing the spec sign that we put up from the road and a little bit closer. The second is showing the existing Chestnut Market, and then our immediate neighbor to the north with the Sleep Number, Buff City Soap, that plaza, and then the car wash for context as well. I did want to show the signs on both facades, on both Sleep Number and Buff City Soap. And then that fourth page is, we just worked up to scale to about a foot, the sign that we're proposing as compared to our neighbors, and you can see that it is far, far smaller in scale than the neighbors. The touch free, just for contrast, there is one of the four signs on the car wash. And then we do show the monument sign, just for context, the car wash monument is, you know, almost twice as tall as that mobile monument sign out there. And then you can see in the background with the mobile photo, the Hudson Plaza sign is, you know, 10 times as big, and I realize that's not an issue of zoning, but just to show the scale. And then the final is, I did want, since there was a question about whether we needed the both sides of that corner for our sign, I did want to kind of show the special consideration here, which is, I think it's unique that we are at a gas station, and such the pumps are in front of the building. And so this is a photo from, and I did risk my life to take this, I'm standing in the middle of the entrance to the parking lot, and so that's when you pull in. So it does provide us better visibility, just that we can have that whole corner. Thank you.
The last time you were here, we talked about being able to modify the base of the monument sign. Is that something you'd be able to accomplish?
I did talk to our landlord, CPD, and I relayed that, and I can promise this board that we will get it done if the landlord doesn't. You know, I'm happy to pay for doing the, you know, getting it to code in terms of the base there with foliage and, you know. Landlord didn't acknowledge, though.
And thank you for putting up the temporary sign. I think that was pretty helpful, but I'm not sure that both sides offer much more than just one side. Can you address that?
Sure, yeah. You know, I think maybe the best illustration of that is on that fourth page, if you look at the comparison with the other businesses there. So again, to scale, you know, we were measuring those other signs from the ground, so I can warrant that it's within a foot to scale. But I think you can see that if we were just proposing one facade, you can kind of see where the break is. You know, each side that we're proposing of Moon Burger here is only about seven feet. That's compared to 20 feet wide for each of those Buff City Soap signs and 21 feet wide for the-
I'm not really talking about the size.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about the sides, S-I-D-E-S.
Sure. The, I think if we, the way that the window, and I apologize, I think it's probably, can see this best on the first slide, the way that that window covers the building there, the, I think we are limited in terms of how big Moon Burger could be if we were only on the front of the building there. Because of where the building is, we could probably only get an additional foot and a half or two feet or so, so ultimately the Moon Burger scale, I think, would be smaller. What I do love, and, you know, when we had that spec sign up, I got some calls from folks who said like, "Are you sure it'll look small?" And so that's my concern, even as is in what we're proposing, that it's not very big as viewed from the road. I think having it at the corner, and it will look significantly better than it looks here with the spec, I think provides the best visibility from the road. Since all of the visibility with, will be traffic coming south, you know, we don't expect people on the northbound side to look across and see it.
Yeah, so one of my concerns is that it's on two sides.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if you could, I appreciate that you want more signage.
Yes.
Okay, but I'm trying to limit the amount of signage.
Sure.
So help me understand why just on the front, it's insufficient.
Sure, you know, I guess that, so it's about seven feet on that front facade now. I think we could probably extend it to nine. Nine feet wide for the whole Moon Burger logo there would be a far smaller Moon Burger scale than its current 14 feet across the two facades. I think it provides more visual interest by viewing it from the corner, and I think, you know, when you kind of come down, I think you actually see it in a way that's much more noticeable and interesting, even though we are so far set back. And I would just go back to that final photo in this packet, which shows the obstruction from the front of the building because of the pumps. So I think that's the other problem with just the front facade. And then, you know, and I don't know if this is reasonable for the board's consideration, but I would just say, you know, I would put it to the same to Buff City Soap or Sleep Number, they have much, much larger signs on both facades, and so I would make the same argument to them, is why do they need two signs for ZAR single?
All right, those are all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Christine? Okay, so if Moon Burger is going to be on the monument sign, you'll be able to see it heading south?
Yes.
And then if you have Moon Burger on just the front of the building, so now you're seeing it from the south and on the front of the building, so that might, you know, make the difference, and it would just be the two signs. The other thing I wanted to ask you was, you're going to have, you want to have drive-through on that?
Right, yes.
Are those colors what you're intending to use? Because it was really hard to see drive-through.
So the, we actually put, just to not confuse guests, we put coming soon underneath.
Right, okay.
It will be drive-through, but we did put it in yellow because that's intended to be, and I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me the original application, but that's intended to be like a very small, almost just like LED strip. It's not like the big kind of dimensional letters like the Moon Burger piece. So it'll look like, almost like a traditional neon, even though it's a much more energy-efficient LED. So it's that kind of yellow color, but it will be visible, but not crazy. And, you know, to your point about the southbound side, our assumption here would just, you know, and I've driven from the south many times looking across, I think that our expectation is that we won't have almost any visibility from the other side, just because even that monument side, when you view it from the, you know, the scale of this monument side is pretty small, and so it's not even that noticeable from the southbound side, even though it'll be helpful for us, but from, I think, the northbound side, you won't see it at all.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Is this a lighted sign that you have, other than the LED for drive-through, or how's it going to be lit?
It's internally lit, channel letters, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Did you ask the conversation to stop? The back corner?
Pardon me, you guys in the back? I'm trying to listen to this out here. So-
I'm sorry. It's internally lit, a channel letter sign, so it'll be, it'll glow red internal.
Okay. What are they going to do with the cameras? Whatever else is there?
Not me getting up on a ladder, cutting that sign. They'll be, they'll cut a few feet, I think, to the, either they, they'll be able to put them mounted right by the gutter up there, because there will be still six inches of gap, but it'll just need to be real quick, or they can move them slightly to the left. But I think they'll probably go for the corner.
Okay, and on the present monument slash pedestal side?
Yes.
They're going to move the prices down, and you'll be under Chestnut Market?
Correct.
Maybe the next box?
Yes, sir.
Same size as Chestnut?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that monument sign is not growing in scale.
Right.
Right, so just shifting the boxes down.
Philip?
I have no questions.
Larry?
Is that going to be drive-through only, or will that be able to be accessed from inside the gas station?
Inside, and I hope you all come see it. It'll be, it'll be a gas station experience like nothing else in the country, truly.
And so the sign that's on the building, that's really just once you see this, see the Moon Burger on the mobile sign, that when you make the right turn, you see where it is.
Yes, sir.
You can't really see that from going south on Route 9.
You'll be, yeah, it's small, it's small still, but, you know, because there's only access from the northbound side, you know, really only people are turning in from that, from the one entrance at the north side of that lot. And so our assumption is the only place we need people to be able to see this is from that entrance at the north side. You know, we, because it's, we can't count anybody from the, coming up from the northbound side, seeing the sign to their left, we really just wanted to prioritize that. And so that's why I think just trying to maximize our visibility. But you can see in that, on the first page, that left photo, that is from the sidewalk closest to the street, so it provides visibility for us, but it's, wanted to keep it still as minimal as possible.
Is there any issue with like cars, like, could cars going for gasoline, cars going to be like backing up to the entrance of Route 9?
That was actually a question from the building department, and the planning in the original approval for this site plan for the drive-through, and the good thing is this is a giant drive-through. We have a huge, it's like a 12-car stack that wraps around the building. So I can tell you from our location up in Kingston, that the average that we have at any given time are two to three cars. If we have any more than that, we're losing business at any point, because they're just folks who are going to see a line and not even pull over to try. So we have far, far beyond the space that we would need in the drive-through.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Tony? No questions. Tony?
Yeah, just one thing. It's not in this particular packet, but last month you had a rendering of the Moon Burger sign that would appear on end beneath Chestnut Market?
Yes.
Okay, here we go, yeah, thank you. So is there any particular reason why that has to be diagonally on there?
No, there was a comment in the original notes. The, what we like is, you know, the reason that we did that is, you know, it's, we're still talking about a relatively small scale, you know, even versus, you know, the monument side to our north with the Sleep Number and Buff City Soap and Jersey Mikes, and all those businesses have signage on there. We still have a much smaller monument here, and so we just wanted to maximize space within that same-sized box as the Chestnut Market. So it gives us, it basically gives us a tiny bit larger scale in that box, and I think if we made it horizontal, we would only shave, you know, two or three inches off the height of that box.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Linda, you can ask some questions. We can't focus.
I can't think of any right now.
Okay. Do you have any illustrations of what would comport with the code that would satisfy what you want to do?
I do not.
Okay, is there a way to, do you think there's anything that you could do that would be within the code to satisfy what you want to do?
In my heart of hearts, I do not. I really, I do fundamentally feel like what we are asking for is within the precedent set by our immediate neighbors, and I think the scale-
That's not my question. My question is whether, within the existing code, whether there's anything that you can do that would satisfy what you want to do.
I don't believe there is. We, you know, and I mentioned at the last meeting that we actually had a much larger sign, that when we showed folks in the office, they said there's no chance, so I didn't even want to come in and waste anybody's time with that. So we actually, this was a far smaller version. But to be clear, if I really, if I felt like we could do this within code, I would much rather not waste your time and do that.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, based on what you just said, if the sign was going to be just on the front of the building, and looking at your original graphic here.
Yes.
Would this sign still be larger than what's allowed by the code, the smaller one?
No, I think it would, I think, I think they're entitled to 25% of the frontage or up to 100 square feet. I think that's correct, Chrissy?
It's not a question of the size of the sign, it's the fact that they already have a wall sign, and they're looking for a second and or third wall sign that wraps around the side of the building. So it's not the size of the sign that's at issue, it's the variance is for the number of signs.
So if it's just on the front, then it's not an issue?
Yeah, it would be an extra sign, an additional sign for the front, and then an additional sign for the side. So two variances for that sign, yes.
But if it's not going around the side, if it's just on the front?
It still needs a variance.
Okay.
Then it would need one variance instead of the two variants.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have a copy of the county recommendation on this one? I don't have it in my packet, but I don't remember from last month if that was just-
Let me see. Yes, I have it here.
Yeah.
Oh, we do. I just don't have it.
Yeah, I saw it. And I do have one more question.
If it's, if it's one sign that's wrapped around, is that still considered, is one box still considered two signs?
Because one's not facing the roadway.
Okay.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Anyone in Zoom that wishes to comment? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And like each of the applications tonight that we'll vote on, you can either wait till the end of the meeting, or you can contact the zoning administrator in the morning, or maybe the next day.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
And now we'll go back to item number four, the interpretation. Okay, I think, I think you both were sworn last time?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so you're still in the road. So we had an opportunity to review some of the, I had asked that you submit some of the case laws or the situation that you were relying on for us to review, and I think everyone's had an opportunity to review that. Anything else you want to say?
Attorney Hyde Clerk, I don't think there's anything additional to say, just that with those definitions, I feel like the town of Poughkeepsie's definition actually even goes a step further in providing that this should be considered a public utility. So you're not going to see exact, when you review the definitions from the other municipalities, I don't think you're going to see it lining exactly up, but the main-
Yeah, I didn't see that anything was really on point. And I, you know that there are two other codes that deal with battery storage and power, right? There's one for solar, which includes storage, and one for wind power, which includes storage. But our definition for public utility does not include storage, leave that out. So can you, can you help me understand why we should interpret that any differently?
The storage that's included with solar and wind is not on its own, so while those do mention that storage could be included in those facilities, because those are generating facilities, I do think that there is a difference between a generating facility like solar and wind that may include storage, and a standalone storage that's using the existing utility infrastructure and almost acting in concert, and similar to that of a substation, which is also not included as a standalone definition in the code. So I think when you look at the actual utility of the standalone storage that's not generating, that it's assisting with the distribution of electricity, which is clearly stated as included in the public utility definition, I think that's where I would differentiate between standalone and storage that's included with a generator.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
No.
All right. No questions. Philip?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony?
I do have a question for you. Last month, I asked you a little bit about the technical end of what you're doing, and so related to that, you have existing sites in New York State?
Yes.
Right? Are they all there in connection, you know, adjacent to a substation?
Yes.
Would this type of site always be adjacent to an existing substation?
It has to be, because it's not generating.
Okay, so you can't just put one of these casually someplace other than next to a substation?
Correct, there's very specific search areas for this type of facility.
Okay, thanks.
Linda?
I don't really have anything.
Okay, I'll open this up to anyone who has a comment on the interpretation, keeping in mind, this is just an interpretation of whether our zoning administrator has correctly denied this application as fitting within our code. All right, I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. I'm going to suggest that we adjourn this, I'm going to suggest we have a discussion about, well, let me, I'm going to suggest that we have a discussion about this, about the interpretation, and then I'm going to move to adjourn it to the next meeting so that we can get either adopting the zoning administrator's determination or denying the application at the next meeting. So I move to adjourn this to the March 11th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay, and so we'll have a decision by the next meeting.
Just as a clarification, the adjournment did not close the hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, I think that brings us to item number six, 21 Monroe Drive.
Hi, yes, that's me.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, so we are proposing to make a detached garage on my property. It says on here that it's actually going to be in front of the existing house, but ultimately it won't be. We are building a small addition on the front of my house that does not require a variance, so the garage will actually be behind that. It won't be in front of the house when it's all done. But it is five feet from the house for fire code reasons, and it is only five feet from the property line on the back corner.
So I move to adjourn this to the March 11th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay? And so we'll have a decision by the next meeting.
Just as a clarification, the adjournment did not close the hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, that, I think that brings us to item number six. 21 Monroe Drive.
Hi, yes, that's me.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, so we are proposing to make a detached garage, um, on my property. It says on here that it's actually going to be in front of the existing house, but ultimately it won't be. Um, we are building a small addition on the front of my house that does not require a variance, so the garage will actually be behind that. It won't be in front of the house when it's all done. Um, but it is five feet from the house for fire code reasons, and it is only five feet from the property line on the back corner. Um, it does get further away from the property line as you get to the front of the garage. The garage itself that we're proposing, you guys, I think, have a picture of it. It does have a second story, it is completely unfinished, um, and it has a dorm room on one side because my husband and my father are both very tall, so I just want them to have enough room to be able to walk up there for storage purposes, but it's all unfinished. And it won't be taller than my house, it, it's the same height as my house. So just a detached garage. My neighbor, uh, two houses down, also just put one on very similar. I know that, um, when you guys came to look, you went and saw, same thing, gable roof.
All right, and when you say that you're planning on building an addition in the front, what are you planning on doing first?
I was hoping to do them at the same time because it is cheaper to have contractors here all at the same time. But I guess if I needed to build one and the other, I can.
So, well, what I'm gonna suggest is that if we just granted the side lot variance and didn't grant a variance for being in front of the principal building, you would have to, to get your CO, you would have to have the addition, it would have to be behind the addition.
They're two separate permits anyway because it's detached, so that's fine with me. Uh, my only question would be if, once it's all framed out, the original, the addition is all framed out, does that count? Could I start the other one at that point once all the footing and framing is done?
I think by the time it's all, all done, the garage has to be behind the principal, the front of the building.
Correct, it will be.
Okay. And let me ask you this, will there be a driveway in front of the garage?
I do have to add just a little bit of garage, a little bit of driveway on the left side, but it should come down to be the same width on the end. We're only gonna add, you know, to be able to pull into the driveway, so we will be adding a little bit of driveway there.
Okay, so if it's more than 15 feet wide, you're gonna need a variance for that?
For my driveway if it's more than 15 feet wide?
Yes.
I do not know that. Um, what is my driveway now? My driveway is more than 10.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more than 15 feet now, but if you're not gonna change anything, it's not a problem. But if you're going to, if there's gonna be a driveway in front of your garage, you're gonna, I think that you're gonna need a variance for that.
Okay, so if it was wider right at the garage and then got shorter, the wider part still can't be more than 15 at any point?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, I, I guess I would get to that after.
Okay. All right. And let me ask you this, is there a reason you can't move it either forward or back? So your side lot line, your property line is, is, is a diagonal, right? So it goes...
The house, it's aligned with the house.
Right, with the property line?
Yeah, the property line goes the opposite direction.
So if you moved it forward, you would be farther away from the property line, is that correct?
I would be, but then I'd be in front of the addition.
Okay, all right then.
I didn't want to get closer, I don't want to get past that 30 feet in the front because then I need a variance because I'm too close to the road.
Okay.
So I stuck it right in the middle as much as I could get on the property line.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
Were you planning on putting plumbing in the garage?
No plumbing, no. Um, just light, plug, garage door opener.
You put electricity in it for...
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Okay, I just curious about something. On, on your submission, it shows an addition on the other side of the house, uh, so you're not gonna do that?
That is the addition that we're talking about, that I would make sure it was built first so that it was in front. That one doesn't require a variance, but that, I will be getting permit for that first.
Okay, so how, so it would be in the same position that it's shown on this drawing?
Um, yeah, the one in the front comes off of my one level part of my house because I have a split level. So the addition would come off the one level, the same one level. And then the detached garage would be over by the driveway.
Okay, so when you're saying the detached garage would be behind, you mean behind what, the front line of your existing house?
The front line of what will be my existing house, not yet, but yes, in, in front of the addition. It will not pass the addition.
You guys understand what this?
Yes.
I wonder if somebody does, okay, thanks.
Linda?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone. Anyone on Zoom? Did you have any other questions? Who? Anybody? Then I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, and that brings us to 49 Honey Lane. And I understand there'll be a recusal on this one?
Yep.
Okay. So Tony S. will be recusing himself, and so Linda, you'll be the voting member.
Yes.
All right.
What's your name?
State your names.
Cole Bender.
Christine Bender.
Mr. and Mrs. Bender, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Sure, we're here, we'd like to build a 14 by 20 foot attached garage in the front of our home.
Okay, you were here some time ago with a, with a different plan to put a garage on the other side of the house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so now you want to put it in, in the front of the house on the existing driveway?
Correct.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions about the, the drawing that you provided.
Sure.
How far is it from the house to the property line?
How far is it from the house to the property line?
Yes.
Um, that's probably 20, 34 feet?
Okay. And where will the front of the garage?
The, the front of the garage will sit 12 feet behind the fence line?
Okay. The drawing here seems to indicate the fence line is, that's the property line?
Um, the fence line's, that, that property line actually is about a foot
About a foot?
beyond that, that fence line, if we take.
Okay. And so the front of the garage will be 12 feet from...
Correct.
Behind the...
Behind the fence line.
Behind the fence line.
And then from the front of the garage to the street, it would be 24 feet.
Okay, but how far is it to the... How far is it to the property line?
The front of the garage? The front of the proposed garage?
Yeah.
12 feet.
To the property line?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I thought you said it was 12 feet behind the fence line, which is right around the property line.
So the, the front, front of the garage, proposed garage, sits 12 feet behind the fence line?
Okay, and so how, how far from the property line will the front of the garage be?
12 feet.
Okay, all right.
It's probably 13 feet.
Okay, those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
I actually have the same questions you have, it's very deceiving with this hand sketch. Question for you, Mr. Chairman, should we request that they get a architect's drawing and maybe stake the thing out so we can see where the garage is gonna end and the property line starts? We've done it before to make it...
Yeah, I, I think that there are similar, um, buildings in your, in your area, but I don't think, I, I don't think they come, they don't encroach as much as what your project does. And I'm having a hard time visualizing it from the drawings that you provided. So I gotta see if there's any other questions before we get back.
I mean, it's, I don't understand, you can't understand that the, the garage would sit back 12 feet from where the fence line is? I'm proposing to come off my building
Right.
20 feet.
Right.
That puts it 12 feet behind the fence line.
Okay. Eric?
You know, so, so basically the fence line, which is a pretty, pretty big fence, is gonna sit, it's 12 feet in front, so you're talking about encroaching. I don't know how that would be relevant.
Okay. Tony? Oh, I'm sorry, Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
I, I agree with Phyllis, this is?
All right.
That, that we should have a better drawing, I find the drawing is very confusing. And in, in looking at it, it looks like it's gonna cover a window and part of what looks like an addition in the back, and it just looks very cluttered to me visually. As you said, the neighborhood has, the other garages that are similar have a lot of space in the driveway to the street, and they don't stick out that much, but it could just be the way the drawings are, so...
You guys were at the house yesterday, you guys were at the house yesterday.
Like this is just, um...
You should have been able to visualize it from that.
Yeah, because this is like, looking at it, I, it's...
You're looking at a section drawing.
So I, I agree that I think we should have said, you know, either an architect, a survey and a drawing, some sort of a, a drawing that's true to size, that's a true drawing.
One of my concerns is that you have a number of variances on the property. It's a small property, it's a corner lot, you're kind of impacted by a number of different things. But I want to make sure that, that it's just not too much for the piece of property. So I'm gonna ask for some sort of architectural drawing, and like a quick survey that's shown, or at least somewhere where we can get a better understanding of what it's gonna look like. That's my concern.
I mean, I submitted, I submitted the, uh, the plot, which shows the structure on it, and that's the scale.
Well, I, I see a picture that has, uh, four lines on it, if that's what you mean by... I see a drawing, which I, I'm struggling with a little bit, which why I'm asking for some clarification. And my concern is that the property is, is pretty heavily, yeah, I can see that, but I, I, I can't visualize exactly what it's gonna look like. So my concern is that your property is burdened pretty much by all the variances that you've already received. And so I don't want to impact it any, anymore. Um, and that's what my question is, you don't have to do it if you don't want to.
So if I go out and get architectural drawings, that somehow improves my, my chances of getting it approved?
I would say so, yeah.
And what type of architectural drawings?
Something that, something that actually show, so I can visualize it.
So you want elevation, you want, you want a, what, what kind of drawing would you like?
An architectural drawing showing, showing the garage on, on, attached to your house with the driveway and the fence and the roadway, so I can picture what it's gonna look like.
So you want elevation?
I want, I want everything that, if you were going to build something, what it would look like.
So you want me to get a full, a set of full plans?
It doesn't have, you don't need it for the siding and all the other things, but enough so I can understand what it's gonna look like and what its impact on the property is gonna be.
I mean, it looked similar to my neighbor's, who lives right across the street.
If it looks, if it looks just like your neighbor's, then it won't be a problem. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
If I could just ask about the size of the garage?
Sure.
I figure it needs to be 14 to fit a car, a modern sized car. You're asking for 20 feet in length.
Correct.
So what if you, what are you doing, storing extra things in the space?
No, you guys sold the car in the driveway.
Yeah.
You sold the car in the driveway that I plan to put in it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, you said that's what you wanted for the last, for your last application.
I did. You guys gave me no alternative, you just closed the case. You know, your, your objections were that it was detached, that it was adding a secondary driveway. Here I'm reducing my driveway footprint. I'm not encroaching any further than the fence. I'm clearly saying it's 12 feet behind the fence. So...
Okay. So I'm just struggling to visualize it. So if you want to help me with that, I think that would be helpful to him.
Okay.
All right.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
I'm looking at this drawing here, so the garage would obviously be in front of the house here. You're, you're not gonna be taking into account any of this, like where this window is, it's gonna be right, it's going to a butt that, that window, is that correct, and go out about that far?
There's a porch behind that?
Right, but, but in front of your house here.
The, the octagon window, it would be eliminated.
Okay, but it's, that's, so, so the garage is gonna come out from that point out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's...
Correct, like the other garages in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Yeah. Why don't you come on up, you can take the microphone or... That's fine, either one, but you have to turn the other one off. Okay, state your name.
David Schneck.
Mr. Schneck, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, what, what are your comments?
Um, I'm the neighbor across the street, I live at 50 Honey Lane. And, um, just the thing that I wanted to mention was the, the visual appearance of the house. Most of the, of the houses in that neighborhood are a similar design, there's actually two designs, there's a cape, and then there's a single story house with a garage on one side and a room is, which is usually a bedroom on the other side. And the addition of this garage would actually make that house look more similar to most of the other houses in that neighborhood. I would say probably 80 to 90% of them are the single story house with the garage and a, and a bedroom kind of offset, and then a front entrance in the middle of that. So the garage that's being proposed, my understanding of it, is that it would come out in a similar manner to most of the other houses that have that garage extending out.
Okay.
And being that we're across the street, that's our front view.
So you don't have any objections?
I have zero objections to it. It actually is a very aesthetically pleasing, architecturally house, and if you add that garage to it, it will actually improve an already good looking house. So yeah, we have, my wife and I have absolutely no objections to how that house is gonna look.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to comment? All right, I don't see anyone else, so I'll move to adjourn this to the, uh, March 11th. And you, is that enough time for...
May or not, may or not be.
Do you want to go to April?
I mean...
Why don't we sue it for March, if you have it, if you have it, we'll be able to do it, if you don't, then we'll just extend it for another month.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
I'm looking at the drawing there, and I just have one question. Right now, to get to your, front of your house, you would walk through your driveway and onto a walkway. Are you going to have to change how you, the egress and ingress to your home? Like, how much space are you going to have of a walkway between the new garage and, and, and the front door, the walkway that you currently have?
Four feet. Four feet.
Alright, that's it, 'cause I really couldn't tell from the drawing. It looked like it was, like you would use a walkway and have to do something in the front, so that's why I asked. Thank you.
Okay, again, is March enough time? Or do you, you wanna do it for April? Or we could do it in March if you're not ready.
Yeah, we'll just say March, and then if I'm not ready, we'll have to postpone it to April.
Okay, that's alright. Well, everyone, I'll move to adjourn it to the April 11th meeting.
Second?
March 11th, what did I say? Any discussion? All those in favor, say the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and one recusal? Okay, thanks. Alright, so.
Yeah, the other two were for emergency one. But I told them that we didn't have the county's recommendation, so we could not vote anyway tonight.
Alright, so, we can take care of. Will we do 211 Road Drive?
Yes.
This is an application. I think, it's a variance request for anyways. It was denied because it was, I believe that was in front of the principal building, which currently it would be. And then also it's within five feet of the side lot line. Anybody have any concerns about this one? Describe, you know, the limitations of where they're gonna be. My suggestion is that we just approve it for the lot line and not give a variance for being in front of the property. Because if they don't, if they don't build the addition, which they said they would, then they're gonna have a problem. So. So let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change would reduce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, there are similar properties in the neighborhood. And so therefore, I don't think it'll have any detrimental effect. In fact, I think it'll clean up the property by taking care of some of the other stuff that's there. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Based upon the setup of the house, there's no other, there's really no other way to put it, no other place to put it. She said that we're gonna be further, it approaches too much onto the front lot line. And we'll put it, or at least we'll put it in front of where the additional building is going, addition, is going to be requiring another variance. And whether, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's, it's 50%, but in, in that neighborhood, that doesn't seem to have much of an impact. And so I don't think it's substantial in that regard. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or, or environmental conditions, there's no evidence of that. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, that is, that's not a reason to deny it, and I would offer those findings. So Christine, do you mind making a motion?
May I ask you a question? Sorry. Too late for your question, it's not too late for a question. Is there any required setback from the edge of the addition to? I mean, do they have to be a foot, six inches? Is that something we should make clear to them so they don't in error, not set the, not bring the addition out far enough?
Oh, it's, yeah, there's a front line one. She said that she's gonna be within, she doesn't need a variance for that.
Right, so from the front edge of the addition, right?
The front edge of what?
The addition.
Right.
From the front edge of the garage, there's no required, as long as they don't infringe on the lot line.
Okay.
They just wanna make sure that they don't find out something wrong.
Okay, Christine? I don't think he's gonna interrupt anymore.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor, say the word aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Okay?
Should we go?
Alright, now, Moon Burger. So there are, there are three variances. One is for the freestanding sign, monument sign. Would, anybody have any concerns about that?
Can I ask, what did the county say? I can't find my county report, I'm sorry.
Here's. So they recommended denial. And they had some other comments. The existing monument sign does not conform with either the size limit or design criteria established in the code. Proposed use is an opportunity to bring the sign into compliance, improving the aesthetics of this rapidly evolving corridor. We recommend that board not grant the variance for size and that the sign be redesigned with a base and landscaping, with the side panels reduced in size to meet the code. For the wall sign, the applicant has proposed an awkward-looking corner mount with only half of the business name showing on each facade. The code only allows wall signs on facades that face a public road. It appears that the white background would not be internally illuminated, but the board should confirm that with the applicant. We recommend that the board condition approval of one additional wall sign on it being positioned entirely on the east facade facing the public road. And so for these reasons, we recommend the board deny their requested variance for the size of the monument sign and condition the wall sign request on limiting it to one sign on the facade. And if the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires it to do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board, and that it notify us of the reasons for its decision. So, regarding the monument sign.
So the issue on the monument sign is the size of the lettering on the sign?
That was one of the things, and the fact that the whole monument sign doesn't conform with our code. But we talked about conditioning, we talked about correcting at least the base of this, of the freestanding sign to comport with that portion of the code regarding freestanding signs. So, some sort of base, some landscaping, something.
Okay, so that, that sounded like.
If we were to grant, if we were to grant the freestanding sign, that would be a condition to that.
It's not the lettering of the freestanding sign, it's just the size of the freestanding sign. They're looking to add another panel, which makes the size of the sign larger. So.
The whole, the entire freestanding sign.
Correct.
It's not actually getting taller or anything, it's just that they're, right, the, the face of it.
So, they're proposing 68.33 feet and they're allowed 50. So they would need a variance for the 18.33 feet. Previously, that sign had variance previously for 59 square feet, so.
Lisa, I got a question for you. This, the freestanding, or the monument sign, if you will, that sign would be 68 square feet. Right?
I think the face of it is, when, when you consider the, all of it, it's not this applicant's portion of it, it's the entire sign.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
The applicant's portion of it is 9.33 square feet. By doing so, it makes the total sign 68.33 square feet.
But by doing the base, it brings the sign into compliance, for what we're asking.
Only for the design part of it, not for the size. It's still, it's still too big. It's still bigger than what the code allows.
And I don't suppose the Chestnut guy is wearing it too?
No, I don't think they are. And I, I think you're kinda stuck with the, the gas station.
Being in the gas station.
Signs. So, anybody have a concern about that?
What's in question?
Just the freestanding sign.
Making a monument sign up the code, but allowing.
Just, well, not the code, because it doesn't, it's still not gonna conform completely with our code about, because but at least the base will look like, like what we want the rest of the other freestanding.
The sign would get bigger, but look more as what the code is, closer to the code.
Well, the sign would get bigger. Yeah, I guess the sign would get a little bigger. You know, there'd be an additional sign.
The perimeter of the sign's not changing.
Right.
Right.
They are putting additional lettering, so the face of the sign gets bigger, but the perimeter of the sign is not really changing.
Okay.
They're filling an empty space with the sign.
There is a staff report that talks about the applicant, whether there are any other ways to do it. I, I don't see that there's any other way to address the freestanding monument sign. They put this, other than putting a sign there, so, okay. So nobody has a problem with that portion? Okay, now the, the Moon Burger. One. There's two things. One is that it's on, it's on, it's an additional sign, it's an additional wall sign, and it's on a sign, it's on a side not facing the public highway. So that's two variances.
And, well, isn't there a third as well? If it's, if it's actually on both sides, it's a third variance.
If, if the sign were facing the street, they wouldn't need a variance, they'd just be able to put it up. So they don't need a variance, they need a variance for a second sign not facing a street. And if you allow them to be on the corners of the building, it would be a second and third sign not facing a public street, technically. So that's why they need the, the variances, I think.
I don't think, I don't think that's right.
I thought that they already had their Chestnut sign on the front.
Right.
And so an additional sign on the front would be, they would need a variance for that. And then they would need a variance for the sign on the side that's not facing a public street.
Right.
So two variances for that one sign. For that one corner sign.
But they're also allowed only the one sign, so if we're counting the corner sign as two, then they need a variance for a second and a third, and you're saying also for a sign not facing the front?
Right. There's three variances for that sign.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, right.
Nope, well, the record's closed, so, just, just us arguing. What do you, what do you think? I'm, I'm not so sure. I'm not sure that the, the corner sign offers much compared to the impact of all those variances we have on the rest of the, the rest of the buildings along Route 9. But I'm also not sure that just on the, on the face of it, facing, facing Route 9, it's, it's big enough to get, to, to show everything that's going on. There will be some directional signs. So. Yeah.
Could you just? Since most of the traffic, right, is gonna be south.
Right.
How many variances would he need to put Moon Burger on the side of the building that doesn't face the road?
Two.
Without the piece in the front, without it being on the front, he still needs two for that side.
Two instead of three?
Right.
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know.
No, that's.
Right, so that's, it is one less, right, two instead of three.
It might, it might actually look better than the wraparound. It might gather more traffic here, I'm thinking. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty clear line of sight from what I can recall, coming down.
If you say I'm in front of that store.
Yeah, it's a much, I think it's just a much cleaner sign, but that's me, I'm not, I don't own the business.
What do you guys think?
I just, with all the other businesses with multiple signs, I find it hard to, I mean, I don't love the sign, but that's my, my opinion. I just, there's other businesses with larger signs that are multiple sides.
All those other signs, do they fit into the code for that, for that project? How'd all that happen?
I don't, without going back, I have no idea.
But even outside of, of Cityville, across the street, you have emergency one, which are, they all have multiple signs on multiple sides.
I mean, some of them do predate the code, but some of them, like especially maybe across the street, like, you know, it's harder to know if those are, would be conforming to today's code. The plaza next door, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember what the, what those, yeah, what the rationales were, if there were variances or not.
Are they all in the same zoning district?
That's a good question.
It's possible that they are in different zoning districts, so they have different sign regulations.
It is possible. I, I don't know. Yeah, don't know if, without looking at the map. But you have.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Now we can. This is Chrissy. So, um, yeah, so, uh, this, um, Buff City so has a variance for a second sign, not facing a public road, I believe. That was your question, right?
Yep.
Yes, should we do a straw bump?
Here's, here's what my, I, I have a suggestion that we reopen the public hearing and ask the applicant if he were to only get one sign on the building, if he would prefer it on the front or on the side. Anybody have any objection to that? Because I'm getting the feeling that you're not gonna authorize, that, that's not gonna be authorized. The corner sign.
Okay, can I just ask one question before you do that? I, I guess I was asking this earlier. If the sign, if there's a sign on the monument sign, doesn't that take care of when you're driving south, that you don't have to see it on that corner? In other words, if it's on the front of the building, just on the front, and in the monument sign, doesn't, it's just.
So you don't think he need, he doesn't need anything on the building at all?
No, I do, I absolutely do, but maybe just on the front of the building. Or what you're saying is unless you prefer it just on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
We don't, yeah, me too. I mean, we don't know what the directional signs are gonna look like either, do we?
But they're gonna be tiny, you can't see them.
Yeah, just be an arrow.
Yeah, they're, they're relatively small, there's a code.
Three, three square feet?
Yeah, code requirement for those. But, you know, when you're in the, when you're in the parking lot, you'll, even that's the worst place to go.
Well, just a question. I'm looking at the adjoining properties, why does Sleep Number get a huge sign on a, facing a non-public road?
I don't know, Chrissy?
Yeah, they had a variance too. Yep, and, you know, so this is comparable to like Dunkin' Donuts inside of Chestnut Mobile. Like, we, the one by Marist, I think, we gave Dunkin', but it wasn't a catty corner sign, it was, you know, just the Dunkin' sign at the front of the store as well. So something like that.
Yeah.
Are there two of them at Dunkin'? I was try, I was just up there. Are there two building signs on, on Dunkin' Donuts? It does, I'm just, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
The Chestnut sign and then the Dunkin' sign.
Alright, I'm gonna move to reopen the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say the word aye. Any opposed? Okay, if the applicant could come forward. Alright, you're still under oath and I want you to tell the truth. If, if we were only to grant one sign on the building, do you have a preference whether it would be the, the front or the side?
Before I answer that, can I make my case one last time for the corner?
Oh, you can do it, but.
Um, so, I, and I don't know whether this is reasonable in the context of this board, but I would just say our architect was the same as the Foam and Wash right there, and he told me that they needed four variances for those signs. That's a single building with four signs. So I would just say in the interest of fairness, I would put to the board, why does the Foam and Wash, which is a much larger building, get four signs on that building, which is way outside of the code? And what we're asking for, I think, is minimal, certainly in scale and, and the scope of the variance. And what we're asking for, I think, is minimal, certainly in scale and, and the scope of the variance. I, I, I think I understand that the, the vision for the corner with the break in the Moon Burger name doesn't immediately, I think, sit with the, the board in terms of something that's going to be visually interesting, but I would just say, and I can only ask you to trust me, is the Moon Burger, the Moon Burger brand, half the battle for us is, is the aesthetic of what we do. You know, if you've ever come up to Kingston, it's the first thing you see right next to the Quick Chuck off of exit 19, and, you know, people come to our building and just remark all the time about how cool it looks, and, you know, that the town there is very supportive of, of what we've done. I can promise you that this thing is going to look awesome. And we really have a vision for how this corner will look, and I think it'll be very helpful. If you tell me that we can only have one side, we're going to make do. We severely disappointed, of course. I want to give our business the best chance we can, and I would, you know, point to what Mr. Gates said about why the business is right next to us, that, you know, those are, that was a new plaza, only last couple of years, and the Foeman Wash get such massive signs, and both have signs on both sides, yet we can only have one on one side. But if you had to press me on the single side, I would say the front for sure, but I really would just ask the board to give us this consideration of just trying to compete with the businesses next to us.
All right, any questions?
So the one, the one in Kingston, is their sign broken up like that?
It's, it's not, no, but we have a massive variance there from the zoning board and, and we run the plan.
I go in their place all the time, I can see myself falling in and saying, what's a moon B? And just like stopping halfway in and cause, you know, hitting me in the back on Route 9. I think it's a very just, it just looks like Boombey, you know?
I, I can assure you that, so the, the actual sign will look much better than this expensive, yet cheaply-made banner that we put up. The, the B and the U will be very tight to the corner, so it'll look like a single word. It, the, the banner here is spaced out, just because it was a quick job from the sign shop in Kingston. But, and if you go over there and see and just turn in, there is no way to miss Moon Burger with the way that we currently have it designed.
So it's going to be this one, not the mock-up, where everything's pushed together?
Correct, it, yes, this, yes, what you saw in the building is probably a worse version than what that mock-up shows.
So you won't have the, just space between the U and the B?
That, this, this wouldn't work for me. I wouldn't do this sign if it ended up looking like this banner. It's going to look very close to that, and they would be very tight. Our sign shop in Kingston, Timely Signs, we've worked with up there, they're licensed in Poughkeepsie, they're awesome. They very much agree that it'll meet and look really cool. I, you know, and I can just tell you, I, I, I don't want to do anything with Moon Burger, with our brand, that is not aesthetically pleasing. It, it only hurts our business if we do that.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Again.
Any discussion? All those in favor who voted by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. All right, so let's take a straw vote on who would grant all the variances.
Well?
All the variances, meaning the corner sign?
Yeah. Okay.
It's a very busy building. I can't believe all the stuff they're selling outside of that building, between the water, the ice, the logs, the... I'm sure it's all within their code or their right, but it's, it's already a very busy building.
Okay, so there is a, a staff report.
We have to do a short form of this, right?
Oh, yeah, we have to do a short form, yeah.
So I move that the ZBA determine that there are no other involved agencies and declare itself to be lead agency for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor who voted by aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. I further move that the ZBA determine that the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor who voted by aye? That motion carries. Okay, all right, do you want to do one motion or two? So I think you could do it all in one, because we're granting everything, you're going to put a condition about the base of the freestanding?
To meet the current requirements.
Correct.
So we're doing a, just a standard approval, right?
And so we're going to, part of the discussion will be that, you know, because we're going against the county's recommendation, it's, it's pretty consistent, I guess, with other variances that we've allowed in, in that very, in that proximal area. It's, this, this building is somewhat different from the other new, newly built buildings, and then it's a different project. And it's kind of a struggle to do it as a drive-in, and so I, I, I think so is some of those, those are some of the reasons that we're going against the county's recommendations. I think we are taking into account the recommendation about making the freestanding sign more consistent with our, our design code. And I, I think that the applicant has made a compelling presentation for why he requires these variances. I don't see any way around it, any alternatives that would satisfy the applicant.
Want me to add all that, or you just have to...
No, I think that's...
Lisa's going to take that. I think Lisa's been writing furiously here, I'm watching her.
Thank you, Lisa.
She's going to say it better than me.
Please, so, yeah, we're just doing, we're just...
That's so unfair. We have a total of four potential variances then that the board is granting in one motion. The first being for the sign of the, the size of the pylon sign, the second would be for a sign not facing a public street, and the third and the fourth would be for additional wall signs, one on the side and one on the front, which is one wall sign, but, is that right?
Yes, and you just want to condition it also on the, on...
Landscape base.
Landscape base, but also consistent with the drawings that he's produced. Because actually, we grant the variances, he could put a bigger sign up, up to 100 square feet or something, right? Like 25%?
We good?
We're good.
You know I'm going to screw this up. Chime right in. All right. I move that the board approve the request for four area variances, set forth an item, whatever it was.
Five.
Five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts those, the findings that set forth by the chair, and with the following restrictions, that the...
Findings of the staff report.
Okay, okay, findings of the staff report, it was close. Okay, so, number one, the pylon sign base has to be brought up to these standards with the...
Design, design?
Design standards for the base to look like.
Landscape decorative base.
Okay. The size of the pylon sign meets the requirements, the placard, I guess, that's, we're okay with that, correct? Variance for one sign not facing a public street. And it was, but at least the two wall signs on the face of the building.
Two additional wall signs.
Right, for the top of the building, the wraparound Moon Burger sign. Is it a woo? Yes? No? Maybe, I'm seeing you looking. Nod your head.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is there, was there a second?
Yes, there was.
All those in favor who voted by aye? Are there any opposed? Nay.
So what was the final count?
I think it was 6-0. Was there anybody else against it? Six.
Six one.
So the motion passes.
Okay, good luck.
I don't see that there's any other items for our consideration tonight, and so I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second this.
Any discussion? All those in favor who voted by aye? That motion carries. See you next month.